Before we get started tonight, we have a very full agenda. But before we get started, I want to take time out to acknowledge the passing of two individuals in town that were very important to our school district. First was Margaret Zanaboni. She was an elementary school principal. She actually started her career as a teacher back at Hedge Elementary, 1956 to '72, then became the assistant principal Nathaniel Morton from '72 to '74, and then South Elementary from '74 to '85. So she dedicated a lifetime to educating the children of Plymouth. And then also, on November 14th, Carl Pratt passed away. Carl had covered local sports since 1988 and was well-known for his Access Cable show, the video sports page. In 1999, Carl was inducted to the Plymouth High School Sports Hall of Fame for his many contributions to local sports and his efforts for helping our athletic program. So if we can take a moment of silence for these two individuals? Now we have a few things. We want to dive right into the full-day kindergarten, which is what everybody's here for tonight. But before we do that, do we have everybody now for the out-of-town trip?
We have everyone except the athletic director. But I believe if you want to move it up on the agenda, we can speak to those issues. And if you want to get it up, I know there are a number of people here tonight to hear this item.
Good, because I see a few folks are here that want to wait for that. But you might be waiting a pretty long time. So what I'd like to do is I'll move you up into the agenda right now, if that's okay with everybody on the committee, so they don't have to sit here until 9:00 before they would come on.
Yes, Mr. Begley and school committee members, we have a proposal tonight for a field trip by the Plymouth North Dance Team. They have actually qualified for the National Dance Team Championship in Orlando, Florida. And tonight, we have Katie McLean, who is here. She is the coach of the team. And tonight, they are here proposing that they attend the field trip. It's from January 29th to February 2nd, 2016. We know this is short notice. It's short notice because they qualified about two weeks ago. They wanted to get on an earlier agenda. They didn't meet the timelines to get on the last school committee meetings' agenda, so they are here tonight seeking your approval. There are 19 students that are selected to go. Their selection is based on their participation on the team. And this will be transportation through plane. And their reservations and flight arrangements have not been made until the committee has had an opportunity to mull this over. So I turn it back to you, Mr. Chack.
Okay. Would the coach like to come up and say a few words? Front and center.
You can bring that down.
So my name is Katie McLean, and I have been coaching the girls for eight seasons. This is my fourth year with them. This is the first time ever that Plymouth North Dance Team is qualified to go to Nationals. We were second in the state at New England Cheer and Dance. And then at our state competition, the week after, we came in third. So we've really gotten up there. We're very proud of what we've been doing. And within the last four years, we've taken what used to be just a club and brought it into a sport at Plymouth North, which we're very proud of. So Nationals, I think, would be great not only for our team, also for Plymouth North High School and the town of Plymouth. Like I said, we've never been there before, and I think it would be a great experience for the girls and a great way to up our program. And as far as price goes, I'm not sure if you want me to talk about that?
Yes. Go ahead.
Price, so it is, well, first off, I went to the Booster Club meeting a few weeks ago, and they offered to pay $100 per student for the registration fee. And so with that taken off, it would be $431 per student. And that is four nights in a hotel and all the park hoppers, transportation to the park. And then on top of that, the student would be required to pay around $200 to $250 for airfare, and then all meals. So we're estimating it's going to be about $1,000 per student to go on this trip.
Any questions from the committee? Dr. Sorenson?
I saw your application. I saw your application, and it reads $1100, $100 from the boosters.
Yes.
And then $1,000 per student. But the numbers you just gave me a second ago didn't add up close to $1,000. Did I miss something? It was 200 and 400.
We're guessing just based on food per person? Because it's not included.
So that's an estimate, then?
Yeah. It's not an estimate. It is an estimate. It's not definite.
And just a follow-up, and you don't have to give me any names or even intonate in any way. Are there any students on the dance team who are financially struggling so that they cannot afford this?
I believe there is maybe one.
And your plans for that person?
Well, we are planning on having a fundraiser as soon as possible. We haven't been able to obviously go on with any fundraisers. We're planning on doing a T-shirt fundraiser, and it's going to be $75 for a business to have their name on a T-shirt, which will wear at the basketball games and as well as in Florida. And so with that, we're going to hopefully make as much money as possible.
And just, I realize I'm putting you on the spot, and you haven't had a chance to plan this, and I apologize for that. But I was specifically addressing that one student who possibly cannot afford it. Will this fundraiser money help that particular student, or will that be divided among the whole team?
It is divided among the whole team. Per MIAA rules, we're not allowed to do things for one particular student. There are other options. There are mini-grants available that each student could apply for. There's, you know, possible gifting, but like I said, it's going to the whole sport. It's not...
Final point on the same theme. So I gather from your answer, you will do what you can to help that individual student.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Then I'd ask for a motion. Ms. Hunt?
I move to that the school committee endorse the plan, that endorse the How to State Field Trip for the Plymouth North Dance Team.
Do we have a seconded? Mrs. Burgess seconds it? Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations on bringing the program this far.
Thank you. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
We're jealous. So if you guys want to leave, it's okay.
They can stay, though.
You can stay if you want to, but... Okay. Now, the main purpose for being here tonight, full-day kindergarten. Dr. Maestis?
Yes. Good evening. Good evening, members of the committee. Now that we have our upperclassman decision settled, let's move on to full-day K. Tonight's presentation is centered around the advancement of the full-day K program as we know it here in the district. This presentation is the second of two. The first presentation was provided by Dr. Campbell last spring to identify the dilemmas and circumstances that we had throughout the district to look at implementing a full-day K program. Currently, in the district, we offer a full-day K program through a lottery system. That lottery system determines students that can be selected based on lottery pick at a variety of open classrooms that we have scattered throughout the district. If you're chosen, you have to provide transportation, and you also have to pay a $4,000 tuition. So over time, we've had great interest by the committee, great interest by parents of the committee, by administration, and also by the professional staff here in our district. So this presentation is really going back to last school year where the school committee asked the central office staff to develop a priority list of items that the administrators in the district felt were top priority for the district. We put together a list of 10. Keep in mind, it's a very competitive list. The list, if we could have provided 100 different options that our principals and coordinators would like to discuss or put on the agenda, we provided 10. And at the top of the list was full-day K. I believe that there are a lot of people in the room here today that are here to hear what the plan is or what the outcomes are of our review. So let's get started. Like I mentioned, this is driven by the school committee, administration, building principals, and professional staff in the district, based on that priority list that we provided to the school committee last year. The goal is to expand the quality of service provided to children in the Plymouth Public Schools and to really review the process that we have right now. Right now, if we just happen to have space in our classrooms or in our buildings, we can actually hold a full-day K option. But the problem that we do have is when a slot is open, a parent from, for example, Cold Spring may get picked to attend a South Elementary slot. And that, at times, is very inconvenient. And even if you're selected by a lottery pick, you may decline that option because it's not logistically advantageous to your situation. So currently, like I mentioned before, it's a lottery system, it's a fee for service, and it's a $4,000 fee. The goal is to expand the opportunity to develop social skills and readiness for first grade and further promote the district's effort to maximize early literacy. In addition, our decisions with full-day K are grounded in our strategic plan. Like I mentioned before, the priority list of the school committee and the variety of input that we've received from the community, as well as our building principals and the school committee at large. Currently, the state of kindergarten across the state of Massachusetts, 88% of school districts in Massachusetts offer a free full-day K program. Plymouth is not one of those. We have 24% of school districts offering full-day K charge between $995 to $4,872. So there are percentages of districts, the 24 remaining percent of school districts actually charge like we do here in the district. The summary of findings, approximately 88% of public school kindergarten students participate in full-day K. Only 24 of the districts offering full-day K charge a tuition. Majority, 77.8% of parents surveyed prefer a full-day kindergarten program. 10 full-day kindergarten students from Plymouth participate in school choice to Carver or Bourne. What that means is we have students in our district, 10 of them, that actually the school district Plymouth pays their tuition to go to a full-day K choice program in Carver and Bourne. So we have students that are looking for a full-day K program. They're actually our choice programs in other communities, and they choose to take that option. Current obstacles and supporters for transitioning to full-day K program that have been identified are one, space. One of the things that we did with the study is we worked with our principals to really analyze every bit of space that we have in our school buildings. Financial, the funding requirements for additional teachers and student resources, staffing support for additional funding required. Geographical area of the town, we have over 100 square miles that we have to take into consideration. And we have specialist support services that we offer. And we want to continue to offer that. If we did offer full-day K, which is art, music, and physical education, we would look to include that. Tonight's presentation will be presented by Dr. Campbell, myself, and Mr. Costin. He'll talk about financials. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Campbell to do a recap of the presentation that we had in the spring.
Thank you, Dr. Maestis. Song? Yes, okay. As Dr. Maestis already stated, a summary of our findings from last year, nearly 80% of those that were surveyed were very supportive of the full-day K option. So I just want to highlight and recap the process that we went through last year, very briefly, just for those who may not be familiar with what led us to our meeting tonight. So back in February, we started looking at enrollment information and staffing data to determine what our needs could be, conducted the study of existing classroom spaces within the district. And really, when we were doing that, we were looking at current configurations and grade level configurations within the schools. We also initiated a community-wide kindergarten needs assessment through surveys. These surveys went to our local preschools, the Plymouth Family Network, our non-school-age families, Plymouth Public Schools' parents, as well as Head Start. We had approximately 200, just under 200, I believe it was about 190 survey respondents. So we felt good about the data that we were receiving. We're happy with the numbers. After that, in April, we developed operational estimates. Again, these estimates were only looking at professional development needs, curriculum materials that would be needed, furniture, staffing, classroom supplies, and equipments. There are other associated factors that weren't looked at at that time. In May, this report was integrated, looking at the survey data, the needs assessment, and all the operational needs that I mentioned before into a preliminary report. And then that report was presented here at school committee in June. And then there was a motion made by the school committee at that time to continue with a fiscal study of full-day kindergarten, to look at different options and see what the possibilities may be. So that's what we're here for tonight. So back in the report that I presented last June, there were a few options based on the information that we had that we felt were worth considering. The first was the exploitation of portable classrooms at the elementary schools. Do we need to do that? It wasn't an option at certain elementary schools just because of the geography of those spaces, the unique conditions of those buildings. It really wasn't an option. There's a lot of extraordinary costs, that logistics, and, as I said, the inability to accommodate that type of structure at 100% of our schools. Another option that was put in for consideration in that report in June was a redistricting exercise K to 8 to explore various grade level configurations. Could we possibly get more space in certain schools if we were to look at elementary through middle school reconfigurations? However, this is very disruptive to, you know, at least 10 of our schools. So we felt that that wasn't really a feasible thing to look at and consider if we didn't need to go through that exercise. Another option that was put out there initially was to look at PCIS, one of the houses here at PCIS, as a possible kindergarten center, given the fact that certain buildings could not accommodate at the time in that report, the kindergartens. Do we potentially have satellite options here at PCIS? This requires additional transportation and capital expenses, administrative oversight, depending on how many classrooms we're talking about, and is certainly less desirable for families than having them in an elementary school. So these three options, again, were things that were considered last year for exploring in June. Since then, we've had several sessions with our principals, several meetings to assess staffing, class size expectations for not only this year but moving forward for next year, and did a thorough inventory of the way that we currently use our space. So when we think about classroom space, we may be thinking a little less inclusive of how we were looking at our buildings in the past and really looking at classrooms that perhaps were being used as office spaces and, you know, have several specialists in there using it purely for office spaces. So can we reconsider that? And then looking at furniture and equipment needs. So after several meetings with our elementary principals, Dr. Maestis, Dr. Gould, Mr. Costin, myself, had several meetings, and we were pleasantly surprised to realize that seven out of eight of our elementary schools can accommodate full-day kindergarten. And I'm not just saying for next year, but for the foreseeable future, if we were to reconfigure some of the ways that we're using certain rooms in our buildings. So we're very pleased with that. There is one exception, however, and that's Hedge Elementary School. Hedge Elementary School, in order to accommodate full-day kindergarten, needs two sections, two adequate spaces for that. Giving our projections for next year, we could only accommodate one. This would require us to relocate one of our classrooms at Hedge to another elementary school for the upcoming school year, with the anticipation of bringing them back to their neighborhood school the following year. So that was one of the conclusions that we made. In addition, our preschool programs at West and South Elementary, many people may not know this, but we do have some satellite preschool programs at two of our elementary schools. Those would have to be relocated. We've had some discussion about having them coexist with the Plymouth Family Network here at PCIS. And there's certainly a very adequate space and some good options there. So these are things that we will be exploring and considering as we move forward from after this meeting. And then follow-up meetings to determine the future needs of preschool. This is something that we, through our exercises with full-day kindergarten, came to realize that we really need to look at that more carefully and more thoroughly as we move forward. So this is another exercise that I'm sure Dr. Maestis will speak to at a later date, but something that we really need to look at as well. So we were pleasantly surprised that seven out of eight of our elementary schools can accommodate, for the foreseeable future, as I said, full-day kindergarten, with the exception of Hedge. And at this time, I would like to pass it over to Dr. Costin, Mr. Costin, to speak to the financial implications for this.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. At the conclusion of the planning sessions, we were charged and began to put together a budget. And I'll go through these numbers in general. There's a little bit behind these numbers, but we also have some additional slides that will explain them. The instructional staff essentially came up to approximately $1.3 million. The additional support staff, $3.2 million, I'm sorry, $320,000. And the transportation, we have 21 routes, half-day routes here in Plymouth for our noonday kindergarten, dropping off and picking up at the same time. In FY17, we would only need to keep one route. So currently, we're spending $187,000. We would reserve $25,000 for next year for one bus for the Hedge students attending West, which results $162,000 savings. If you, again, we're trying to put a lot in one slide here, but if you add up those two numbers and subtract $162,000, that's the $1,444 that we've placed in the budget. You'll see that next, should you vote tonight, you'll see that next week in the cost center budget for each elementary school, divided proportionately. Building modifications that Dr. Campbell said were zero. And the savings in revenue, what we did with that is that we, Dr. Campbell and I worked with the state to do a projection on state aid. And what if we went from half-day to full-day? And that resulted in a state aid increase of $120,000, which we would apply in FY18 budget, which would be a benefit to the town, additional revenue. It wouldn't decrease our budget, but it would be additional revenue for the town. We also applied COLAs on cost of living increases on the instructional staff and support staff, and we took away the $25,000 bus that we wouldn't need in '18. And again, I know there's a formula behind it, but that results in the budget impact to the town of $800,000 for FY18. That would be the first year of state aid. We're required to run the program for one year, and then we file on October 1st for our students, and that generates our Chapter 17 numbers for the following year. So if we could go to the next slide, please. So these next few slides follow a similar design. The first column, first two columns will show the staff that we currently have in kindergarten that are paid for by the budget. The next two columns are the student, I'm sorry, the teaching staff and the dollars that are paid out of revolving. If we go to a full-day kindergarten model, the revolving funds will essentially not be there. So those funds, along with the next two columns, will have to be shifted to the budget. As you can see, we have 13 full-time teaching staff and 4 1/2 full-time FTE staff out of revolving. We would have to add 8 1/2, which would bring our total up to 26 full-time equivalent teachers. The $710,000 on the bottom total revolving and new is the sum of the $313 and the $397. So that would be what was included into the budget for FY17. The next slide demonstrates the same for paraeducators. Currently, we have full-time paraeducators, which are 0.6, which are 19 3/4 hours per week, assigned to every full-day kindergarten classroom. Those are paid totally out of the revolving fund. We would switch those again to the budget, and we would be adding 0.6 FTE for each full-time kindergarten classroom. That would bring that total up to the 15.75, which, again, would be the $320,000 for Next slide, our specialists. As a result of our meetings with the principals and special education director, they established a number of FTEs that would be required across the district for all of these services and disciplines. I simply applied numbers to those and based those on the teaching salary and came up with the 12.3 FTEs and $575,000. So when you total all those together, those totaled the $1.4 million in staff for FY17.
Seems like it's off. I'm sorry. Can't hear myself. It's important to understand that, as I said earlier, the Hedge classroom will be housed at West Elementary School, and that would be for one year, one year only. And as Mr. Costin highlighted, we would have the transportation for that particular classroom to West Elementary. And then the intention is to have them return to Hedge the following year. It's also important to note that specialist classrooms will not be displaced with this plan, so there's no instructional spaces that are being taken over for that purpose. Again, it's the redistribution of some of the office spaces, and we've done an analysis, and the principals have been very careful to look at that and find adequate spaces. It's also important to note that instructional spaces for full-day kindergarten are all appropriate and comparable with other educational spaces within each school. And we want to stress that, that when we look at these spaces for our kindergartners, we want to make sure that it's equitable and comparable to their peers in their school. And at this time, happy to take any questions anyone has.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Who wants to start? Dr. Sorenson?
I have a few. I have a couple of questions. First, I want to ask the question about the displacement of the preschool program out of West and the other school. I forgot. South Elementary. Tell me about that.
In order to create adequate space in those two schools, we would look at moving those programs because we would need the space. Right now, we, in the past, decided to increase our preschool model, and we looked around for available space, and we found space at South and at West. So the idea was to consolidate that program and bring it here with, possibly here at PCIS so that we could really marry the Plymouth Family Network, which does early childhood work with parents and students and future students here to Apollo House. Apollo House is, right now, is a house here at PCIS that has a separate entrance, egress, and is prime for an independent school that could operate within a school. So it's one of the things that we've thought about. It would create the space that we need in those two options, in those two schools, and that would be something that would be logistically advantageous to the families in Plymouth. that would be something that would be logistically advantageous to the families in Plymouth.
Would we anticipate a cost to furnish this building for preschool?
No, we've actually toured the building. We've visited the classrooms. We do have furniture for those buildings, for those programs, so we would transfer the furniture. We looked at the restroom facilities. The restroom facilities do not need to be updated, with the exception of some platforms that we would build internally. So we believe that we could move those programs here with very little modification, you know, it would be absorbed within our maintenance costs for the district.
Okay. And my other question was about numbers. If I look at the FTEs that we have listed here for full-day kindergarten, should I assume that it says one FTE, that'll be one section of full day at Cold Spring, 1.5, that's how we'll, and so we have numbers, we have numbers from the preschools in Plymouth, so we know what that class is going to look like? And do we have enough FTEs and space based on the numbers that we have at this time?
The numbers that we use to develop the plan are based on what we see traditionally for first grade. So that number is what we use to give us that predictable number. We feel very strongly about the number. I think the test of time has helped us to really center in on that first-grade number. And we believe that the figures that we put in front of you tonight are adequate to get this program off the ground.
And finally, on that same theme, I, we, we have to anticipate what that size class would look like. Would we have some room for growth? In other words, I think that we, having full-day kindergarten, we might attract another, another bunch of students to come to Plymouth at that age level. So will we have room to fit them in? Or will we be back here saying we're overcrowded?
The programs that we're building are looking at about 18 students per classroom, the top of 22, and that's what the number that we'd like to keep. If we did see an explosion, keep in mind that there are several sections. Some schools have more than one section, so we look at that distribution. We would keep the committee apprised of any growth bumps that we do see. There are certain schools that we have in the district that have identified some additional space if we did need it. We would keep the committee informed of any changes that we'd have to make, but in my view, it's a little easier to look at adding one opposed to adding any.
Whole program. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else? Questions? I have a few. So for the, for the people at home that are watching and everything, can you, can you just explain, take a few minutes, just explain why we don't have the, up until now, we've had huge concerns of high cost for construction to make these elementary schools usable for full-day kindergarten. That's not the case anymore. But can you explain, can you let extra people understand?
Yeah, I can explain that, Mr. Begley. I think there are, there are several parts to that question, or several answers to the question. One, in my time in Plymouth, this is my 17th year, when I came here, we were about 9,500, 9,400 students in the district. Right now, we are about 8,000. So we have seen an overall decrease in student population in the district. So that overall student population has not been in one segment or one sector of our grade configuration, but it's been all over the place. So by looking at that, we were able to reanalyze those numbers to look at our current population, keeping in mind, as we had started seeing the decrease, we started looking at spaces that were available in buildings. How can we repurpose those spaces? So some of the spaces that we had in classrooms were repurposed for offices, they were repurposed for support space, they were repurposed for a computer lab, computer labs. So what we did is we asked our principals, if you were to be able to offer a full-day K program, how would you configure a building to make that happen? And each principal, keep in mind, they are here tonight, very excited for the possibility of having full-day K in their schools, came up with how they would actually go about configuring their buildings to be able to offer technology, be able to offer support services within the spaces that are available within, within their schools. So they actually did that. The information that you have tonight is based on that configuration. They feel very strongly that they're able to offer a robust program in line with what we've done in the past. And so to answer your question, there's a number of reasons. One is the student population drop in the district. Two, repurposing of space that we were able to use because of that lowering of that population. And the third piece is the principals taking a really proactive look at how they would introduce a full-day K program to their schools with the available space they have to them.
Very good, thank you. The, just, just to make sure I'm clear on the PK, so the South Elementary, we're going to assume that we are definitely moving them to PCIS? Now, take out, assume and definite in the same sentence, that didn't make sense. Are we definitely moving them to PCIS?
Let me kind of paint a picture in a sense. I think that there could be a possibility of keeping the pre-K at South Elementary, but it would cause us to, to cause some configuration changes there that would cost a little bit of money. You know, now we're thinking, it would be much easier to just move that program to an open space that has room to grow, it's logistically close to our other programs. And this is not the pre-K discussion, which we will have down the road, but there is a need to increase our pre-K program. So we're thinking that if there's a possibility, you know, down the road, we would look at increasing it and maybe bringing those programs here. So what we were thinking, really logistically, how do we make it advantageous? And how do we make it so that it's least disruptive for the population at South Elementary? Keep in mind, South Elementary, very limited pre-K population. We believe that there's economies of scale to bring them closer together. Our staff that support that program now are on the road. They travel, we pay them for travel. We think it would be in everyone's best interest to make it much more efficient if they were housed and logistically centered. I know this isn't centered in Plymouth, but it is centered for services at our elementaries.
Very good, thank you. Dr. Sorenson?
I'll wait till you're done.
No, go, I've got a few more. We'll just keep it loose.
Just to, just to talk about the implementation of this whole program, so let me just say it in a sort of, sort of tertiary way, that, that, you know, if the school committee felt this was a very important priority, it is here being presented. If the school committee approves this presentation, and then it'll be presented in the budget next week. If it gets, if the budget gets approved with this amount in it, it then goes to town meeting. It first goes to the Board of Selectmen, and then it goes to town meeting. So it has to get over all of these hurdles before we can implement it. But suppose it passes all of these hurdles, will it start next September?
Dr. Sorenson, that's a very good question, and I know that, I was talking with our staff earlier today, and there seems to be some kind of information out there that we're moving forward to full-day K. In order for us to move forward to full-day K, it does have to survive the process to get to town meeting, which was in April. It has to be approved by town meeting, and then we would implement September of next school year. So we would get information out to parents right after town meeting. You know, that would be typically kindergarten registration would kick up earlier than town meeting. So we would have our parents kind of hold on a little bit until town meeting would give us indication of moving forward, and we'd have to move very quickly after April town meeting to get information to parents and let them know what program we're offering and how that all plays out.
This, this is an educationally sound proposal. It's, we've worked on it, we've studied it. I would encourage parents of kindergarteners and even primary-grade students to speak to their town meeting representatives, because town meeting will have that decision this spring.
To that point, if I may, Mr. Chair, one of the reasons why I think this has risen to the top, as far as priorities in the district, I've even been approached by town meeting members, and I know some of you have, people here in the room have been approached by town meeting many years ago, asking, when are we going to put full-day K in? It's been on the discussion block for a lot of years, and I give the committee a lot of credit for charging us with going out and finding out how we can make this happen. So, you know, the committee's asked for it, you've asked for it, our principals have asked for it. So we have the information, and it's just a matter of how, how the community responds.
Ms. Hahn?
Would it be possible for us to have a forum for the precinct chairs, that they could come here, us, talk about it?
I actually think that's an excellent idea. I think it's advantageous to do a, they actually have scheduled meetings, and if we want to hold one here for them, I think that would be an excellent option. They can actually see what that, what that looks like.
And here, ask questions right from us.
Absolutely. And I think, I think it'd be advantageous for some of the parents that are here tonight to attend any meeting that we have moving forward that has a budget centered around this topic, so that they can really talk to their desire to actually have a program like this.
I want to add that on, what was it, Wednesday? Lost track now. Last week, Wednesday, I think.
Last Wednesday morning, all morning.
Dr. Myestis, Ms. Badger, and myself, we went on a tour of all the elementary schools. We saw all of them, because we wanted to make sure that we weren't cannibalizing one program in order to set up another program. And we just wanted to see for ourselves and be able to report back, you know, what we see out there. And we were very fortunate, on a very busy, busy day, I appreciate the principals taking the time to take us around each one of the buildings, because it was a very busy day for them. And every facility had excellent plans and setup for how they were going to lay out the classrooms, how they were going to rearrange things, how they were going to shift, in some cases, how they were going to shift the motor skills rooms and the labs, computer labs, in order to make room for the full-day kindergarten. So I think the public can be, rest assured, that a lot of time and effort has gone into figuring out logistics of how to implement this plan, to implement the program. So I was very impressed with everything we saw that day. On the Hedge part, Hedge coming back, that's obviously assuming the population's going to, the bubble that we're seeing, right? Because it, I just don't want to give people a false impression that it could stay there for maybe another year if the population doesn't turn out the way we think it's going to turn out.
Well, based on our first grade, based on our first-grade numbers and our trending that we have been, you know, have run through, it looks like it would be a one-year bump. Keep in mind that we don't transport now. Hedge will transport a section of their K students to West, and we did, we did add that in the transportation line. The methodology for students that would travel in the Hedge District to West would be students who are not English-language learners. We have an English-language education program at Hedge Elementary School, those kids would stay at Hedge. If you're a sibling, you have a sibling in an upper grade, they would stay at Hedge. And then we would look at a geographic boundary. Those kids in that geographic boundary closest to West would be the ones that would travel to West. So we would be very transparent and very clear to parents that that's how it would be done. We anticipate it would be a one-year bump and a one-year transition. And the following year, those, those students would go back to Hedge, and they would continue the education from first grade to all the way up. And we would anticipate that we would have enough room that following year to accommodate all classes at their home school 2017.
Very good. Just one thing, so 88% of the state is already doing full-day kindergarten?
Yep.
And if you look at it, you kind of feel like, well, why are we so far behind the curve? So in defense for the school district for just a second, very few of those 88% built two new high schools, remodeled with HVACs and lights and heating systems in all the schools. So we've done a lot of things over the last few years why we're not in that 88, but I believe it's time to catch up now and get into the right side of those percentages. That being said, so before we take, I mean, I'll take guidance here, what I would like to do is open it up to the floor for questions before we would take any vote or anything, if that's okay, since we have, it's one of those fortunate nights when we have a good turnout, so let's, let's use it. So anybody who would here that would like to comment about the full-day kindergarten program, for or against? We're taking them all? Yep. You have to just come up to the microphone and...
I have a very moving voice.
That's all right.
It won't work on TV.
It won't work on TV, so.
It won't work on TV.
And for the record, we just need your name, that's all.
My name is Brendan Brady. Put my in the microphone. Here we go. Brendan Brady. Okay. I have a daughter who would be entering the full-day kindergarten next year and one, one school year behind. One quick point before the question, you commented about having other parents come back for any future stuff. Would it be possible to use the school communication system for when there's events going on? I usually, you get the email, you get the phone call, whether you have a student who's in kindergarten already, or if you have older students, those parents can help spread the message so that the parents are coming to it. So there was nothing about that tonight, it was more of just a word-of-mouth type thing.
It should have been all over everything.
Is it possible to use that?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. And then, so, Dr. Myestis, sorry, I don't know it that well yet. You said that many of your principals are excited for the full-day kindergarten program?
Yes.
Can you speak to what they're excited about, or could they themselves, so that parents, when they are talking to their chairman about approving this, have the right things to talk about, rather than just an alternative?
I'll invite Dr. Fring to the table. He's, he's not all excitable, all that excitable, but tonight he will share a few words.
Thank you very much. Two things come to mind for me when I think of the full-day kindergarten in terms of two big pieces, and one of them is a question of equity. It's something where, for these past several years, we've watched the full-day kindergarten grow and grow in terms of the numbers of sections that we've had throughout the district. And we're very excited about the prospect of being able to bring that experience to all of our children, because we've looked and, and seen, you know, the question of space or a question of tuition or whatever it may be, we think it'd be great to have that opportunity available to all of our students. And the second reason is, the reason why we think it's such a great opportunity is because we've looked at the data. When you look at the performance of boys and girls who are in that full-day program and who have been there throughout the course of the entire year in relation to peers who were there for half, half a day, it makes sense that when you have twice as much time with those teachers, you're going to make a significant amount more growth. So both of those are very, very positive pieces, I feel.
I'm a huge proponent. I'm a stay-at-home dad, actually, so any opportunity for my children to have extra attention from whether it's family or educators is absolutely a good thing. And my children are actually fortunate enough to have gotten into Mount Pleasant through the lottery. So I'm already in this, so I fully support this. So the more exposure our children get to education, the better.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. While we're on that, while we're on that line, are there any other principals? Because they're all here, so any other principals want to get up and comment or shy, camera shy?
I'll ask a question to go through, through the chair, to the principals, because we haven't mentioned the curriculum development, because I would imagine we've had half-day programs, we now need a whole-day program, there has to be curriculum development.
You want, we'll let them speak to it, they, they know this very well, but...
Related to the curriculum pieces, it's already developed. What we're doing now, though, is, basically, children are getting a full-day, those in the full-day program are getting the full Common Core complement, whereas children in the half-day, we're kind of compacting it. So we're really doing the opposite right now. We're trying to provide students in a two-and-a-half-hour session, all those items of which the state is really looking for, that really are better done in a full-day program. So we're actually would be in a better situation if we move forward with full-day K to provide those supports. And the reality is, I mean, we have, we have those programs already going now, so one of the things that it allows for is a lot more in terms of the experiences with regard to the early social study and the early science development, but there are teachers already doing that now in terms of the full-day model that we have in place. So it would be nice to have all of them working within that same system, within the same program for the purpose of collaboration, because they're on different schedules right now. now. So you've got kindergarten teachers in the same building, some are on the half-day schedule and some are on the full-day schedule, and they don't necessarily even have the same time off together to work and collaborate. So that's another piece that we'd be thrilled to have.
Thank you. Sure. Very good. Anybody else from the public want to address? Yep, I, I got him, but I'm going to give him special time, so. Anybody else? Yep, please.
Hi, my name's Maureen Burns, and I have a son that will be entering kindergarten, and we will need full-time kindergarten. A couple of questions or comments. I know that it was mentioned that there's currently 10 students that do school choice in Bourne and Carver, but what about other towns? Like, are we losing other students? I know that there's school choice to Plimpton, that there are students there. And then also, has it been research to see who we're losing to, like, private school, Sacred Heart or other schools, or even Kinder Care or Crayon College, any of those? Because I think it is more of a need, and we are losing more students than probably the 10. And is there any cost to parents? I know that 24%, I think it was that you said, of the other districts in the state do charge. So just taking into account if this would be something that we'd be looking for parents to also contribute towards. And then, I know we've, you know, there's still a long road before it can be done, but if you need the full-day kindergarten, currently I think the lottery is like January or February. So will that lottery be held prior, or how, like, how is that going to work?
I'll answer it. Go ahead. Want me to answer these?
Yeah, please.
I'll try to answer them. You might have to recite a couple.
And I don't expect all the answers. Just these are things, as you were talking, that were coming to mind.
Yes. I think the issue about students that go to other schools, we have 10 that we actually send to full-day Ks that we actually pay for. Okay? So those are the ones that are school choice. Since full-day K is not a requirement in Massachusetts, we'd have to do a little bit more research to find out how many of those kids may be going to other options. And that's something that we can probably dig up. There may be some students that actually, parents choose to pay for a private full-day program in some location. And that, that, that is probably a possi, it is a possibility. In terms of the cost, if we do implement, implement the full-day K program, the program is, is, there's no cost. So there won't be a tuition, there won't be a deposit, there won't be anything of that nature. We're looking at having this program funded by the revenue that we would generate through tax and the reimbursement through Chapter $70 that we would get. And the last component of your question was, I just had it on the tip of my mind here, the lottery. What I would suggest that we would do is we would probably do a mock lottery in the sense that we would take names of people that are interested in having their child participate in a full-day K slot that we would provide at a tuition base, and letting them know that that would be a backup. And that's only the thought that I have here at the table.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Because I know it is something where you need to be looking into if you're going to go in securing spots in other places and, you know, expediting a schedule and trying to-
We would, the problem that you have is if we did advertise a full-day K lottery in April and get the word out, and do a meaningful lottery, and then do screening, and do everything that's available, it, it takes a lot of time.
Right.
So, you know, I'm, this process, like Dr. Sorensen mentioned, is a long process. That's why it's important for people to follow it.
Right.
You know, I would hope that it does survive.
Okay. Well, and like the other parent mentioned, if there could be some sort of schedule that's put out publicly so that we can follow and be able to show the support that we have for full-day kindergarten.
We can do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Ms. Hunt saying in my ear here that she just wants to remind everybody that we have a Facebook page, we have Twitter feeds, we have a website, we have the Voyager publication, we have a lot of, not to mention, we have a bunch of media and stuff that's out there. You just need to avail yourself of them. You can go to the website probably for the place where it's all consolidated. We are lucky to have Representative Moritory here tonight, so I know he is busy, so, and he's, he's, I don't want him to get mad at me, so I'm going to let him jump the line here.
Mr. Chairman, I would never get mad at you. Thank you so much for taking me out of water. I appreciate that. And thank you to the committee members for hearing me tonight. I'm, I'm here as, not just a state rep, but also as a father of six daughters who've already been through all the kindergarten, so it's not going to benefit me, but, but I can see the difference that it does make. And also, I am one of the owners of Crayon College, as the woman before me actually talked to, talked about. And so I talk from multiple, multiple levels of this. I'm very passionate about this. Matter of fact, I said to, to Dr. Maestis, and I think to you, Mr. Chairman, that one of the reasons when I ran for selectman in 2010, and one of the reasons I was allowed to, to run by my wife was to run an all-day kindergarten. So I did do that, and I've been talking about that ever since. And I do that at the state level as well. So if I may, I have a very brief remarks I'd like to read into the record-
Yep, please.
...and just give some other personal anecdotes for that. While, and this, these comments are really, and I, and I heard you bring up pre-K too, and I think pre-K is just as important as, as full-day kindergarten as well. And then I'll give you a little perspective of where we are at the state legislative as well. "While Massachusetts is at the forefront of national and international measures of achievement, our state still has a significant and persistent achievement gap evident long before children enter school. Too many children show up for school already behind, and too many of them will never catch up. Experts agree that high-quality pre-K and full-day kindergarten have both short and long-term impacts on young children's educational, social, and health outcomes. Preventing problems now rather than fixing them later is a cost-effective investment that benefits children and taxpayers alike. More than 40% of third graders in Massachusetts are unable to read proficiently. And among low-income students, that number is startling 61%. These rates have remained unchanged since 2001. High-quality pre-K and access to full-day kindergarten help establish a strong foundation for children's learning, but currently, an estimated 40% of three- and four-year-olds are not enrolled in a formal preschool program." There's all the statistics that I have, and I'll, I'll give for the record some of this information that I have, and with my formal comments as well, so you'll have this. But on a personal note, and it's always been something I never really talked about too much, but I never went to kindergarten, never had the opportunity. Everyone in my family did. Brothers, cousins, everyone did. I never did. And it came to, I think I was in third grade, and my parents had called in one day, and I was told this story, you know, several years later. They thought I had a learning disability, a severe one, and so they wanted me tested. Come to find out, when the teacher found out in third grade that I never went to kindergarten, then the light kind of dawned on everybody. And I, to this day, I contribute, this year is hard for me to do, very hard for me to And I contribute it because I think going to kindergarten helps people with confidence as well as they move forward. And that's something I never, I never had. And I, and that's why I'm so passionate about this. I think every kid should have full-day kindergarten. That's why I started a daycare program, you know, not just to help my kids, but to other kids as well. Because when they come out of Crayon College, they come out, they've learned something. It's not just a, a program where they're actually just, you know, go off and play all day long. They're taught. They're taught and they're prepared. And they're prepared because a lot of them can't afford the $4,000 and the lottery to get to kindergarten. So we make sure we do that. I've made sure we've done that the 12 years we've been in operation. And I, I think this is just extraordinary thing for you to do. I applaud you for what you're doing. It's not an easy thing, what you're doing. I know the struggles you're going to have to go through with town meeting to get this approved, but you have a champion right here that'll be working with you. And I'll be with you all the way on that. On the state level, there are a number of bills, I have five right off the bat that I have right here now, that have already been heard in the Joint Committee on Education. All have to do with full-day kindergarten. So they've all been heard. There is a, in the administration, the Baker-Palito administration, there was a strong sense that they want something to come out on full-day kindergarten, to make it mandated. But we need to look at how we can fund it as well. So there's, there's no more from this administration looking at making mandates without funding. So if they're going to mandate, they want to make sure it's funded. So there is some discussions, a lot of discussions going on about this. Unfortunately, the, the snowstorm we had earlier this year and the opiate crisis have really taken up a lot of the time from the administration. But this will be getting on track next year, and we hope to have something come out in session by the spring of next year on this. What we'll need from everyone, including the public, is, is to write your, or email, or text, or however you want to do it, your state representative, whether it's myself or your state senator, or other state representatives and senators as well, and let them know how important all-day kindergarten is and why it's so needed in the Commonwealth, not just Plymouth, but in the Commonwealth as well. So those are my comments, so I thank you for taking me. I'll take any questions if anybody has them.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions from anybody? Yep, Ms. Hunt?
Another question, but a comment. I also am involved on the state level in some of these bills through the PTA, and there's so much coming down right now for pre-K, which is great, and it's really important. Even nationally, there's so much coming in. But in Massachusetts, kindergarten isn't even mandated. So it, it's almost like we're jumping the gun. We're not even focusing on kindergarten, but we're already focusing on pre-K. And I, I grew up in Plymouth. When I was in kindergarten, there was no public kindergarten. I went to Sacred Heart because of that. So I'm right there, I mean, I, I wasn't, you know, we didn't have it in Plymouth then. So I agree with you, and I, I support it wholly, but I do get, just to put a bug in your ear, because you probably will be seeing me at some point, is, you know, this, all this pre-K talk is wonderful, but let's get kindergarten squared away first. It's really important.
And I think that's a sentiment on the Hill as well, is that pre-K, I mean, that kindergarten is the priority at this point, absolutely. And funding it, and figuring a way to fund it.
Very good. I appreciate your comments, and we're going to take you up on the offer to follow up with you a lot.
Absolutely. Whatever I can do to help with this, please let me know.
Very good.
And thank you for taking the time. I do have to leave now, though, but I appreciate you taking me out of order.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, folks.
Anybody else? Anyone from the public want to comment to the school committee? Yes, in the back.
Hi. My name's Sue Quigley. And you may have answered this already, so I apologize, we've already gone over some of this. But what is the average class, class size now, and what will it be? I wasn't sure.
Dr. Maestis? The average class size ranges from 18 to 22, and we like to keep it there. That's, that's what we like to do. And we've discussed that with principals. We have a trigger mechanism that we would have discussions about staffing, and that happens every year. We have unusual situations that happen over the summer. Some of our schools are more vulnerable than others, but we would hold true on that number. We, we have really serious conversations all through the summer when enrollments come in, because we get people that move to town, people that don't know registrations are at a particular time, so it, it just happens all through the summer. But our numbers are pretty good as far as our predictable first-grade numbers, so right now, we'd like to stick at that number, stick with that number.
Okay. And so, right now, we have all these teachers that teach half-day. So those same teachers will then now do full-day?
Yes.
So that kids will have the same teacher?
Yes, we will. What we'll do is any person, staff member that actually works for the Plymouth schools that's in a full, in a half-day position, they would, we would look at, at increasing that role to 1.0 FTE, which is full-time equivalent. And then we, we'd look at increasing the numbers and hire more staff members to fill the void.
So these teachers, do they need training to be able to do this full-day, or, I mean, they pretty much?
Actually, our, our kindergarten teachers really enjoy the full-day. They, they, a lot of people that come to us that are experienced teachers have worked in a full-day environment already. But the ones that are, that we've transitioned absolutely love it. And there's a great mentoring environment when you work with other colleagues in the building. It's really difficult to have that halftime, working with the full-time, and they don't see each other. So I think it, it really lends itself to a professional collegial opportunity for our staff. We provide staff development. Our principals are very equipped to be able to offer that kind of availability of other staff to assist when needed. But I can tell you that we feel very strongly about our kindergarten staff. We would look for the best that we can get moving forward with any voids that we need.
And then, just so I'm clear on the hurdles, did you say, is it the Board of Selectmen first, and then the town meeting?
Yeah, this is the process. Next Monday night, the school committee will hear our budget. And our budget will have everything that run, that we need to run the entire school district. If we're successful tonight, it will have an additional line item that'll be built into the elementary budgets that will help to fund the program at, at that level. If the school committee votes it tonight, we'll include it into the budget. When it gets included into the budget, it will get heard next week. The school committee will have an opportunity to hear from the principals on how the process goes and what they have, what, what they went through to develop the budget. They will then endorse a budget to move forward. That budget would have to include full-day K. If it includes full-day K, then it goes to Finance Committee. Finance Committee has an opportunity to review the budget. They make recommendations, recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen then vote the budget. Once it's voted, then it gets included into town meeting agenda. The town meeting has an opportunity to hear about this budget process and the inclusion of anything that we add at different caucus meetings throughout the town. One of the participants earlier brought up an opportunity to, or maybe Ms. Hunt brought it up, is we would probably try to get in front of those groups in a combined meeting so that we could inform them of what this includes and what the benefits are, just like this meeting is tonight. Then it goes to town meeting floor, April 2nd. April 2nd, we would have an opportunity to, to answer any questions the town meeting floor has, then it would get voted. Once it's, once town meeting's closed, that would mean, and it's positive, it would mean that it's funded.
Okay.
Okay? So we won't know until the first week in April.
So is there, you know, so you're going to need more tax revenue to pay for this?
Yes.
So will something get cut, or will there be, I mean, is there going to be, are people going to get upset about funding full-day kindergarten?
Yeah, I can, I can address that. This is in preview of next week, and I'll say some of these comments. We're, we're putting our presentation together for next week, but my comments are, our principals, coordinators, and directors have built our budget as lean as we can possibly make it, knowing that we would want everyone to understand that we were very diligent in our budget building in an effort to allow the full-day K program to, to survive.
Yeah.
And that's really how we built this year's budget.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm like, pretty much for this financially. It would really help my family because I could work full-time versus part-time. But then, there's part of me that, I mean, are there studies that, I mean, I heard that their performance is better, but have, I guess I just, why has it traditionally been half-day kindergarten? Is there value to half-day kindergarten? Is, are there studies that show, you know, if you're in kindergarten half-day, then you have the rest of the day to play, and you learn through play, versus being in a structured environment? And, and I'm not, so I, I just don't know. I guess that's a, a kind of a, the motherly side of me versus the financial side of me.
Yeah, well, you know, that's the struggle that we all go through when we raise our kids.
Yeah.
You know, that we want, I mean, I still struggle with why kindergarten is a mandatory Massachusetts, and that's a struggle that I have. It's not a mandatory thing. To answer your first question about why we only have up until this point in time a half-day program, I would tell you it was largely due to funding and largely due to space. Those two factors have really limited our ability. I can tell you, if we had space, we probably would have had full-day K going back to the days way before me. But it's always been a space, all of the, the majority of decisions that we've had with growth in this, in this community or program, adding of programs is really limited to space and redistricting and, and all those issues with population. We're in a unique moment in time that full-day K could be introduced. The problem that everyone needs to understand is the minute you put it in, you can't take issues with population. We're in a unique moment in time that full-day K could be introduced. The problem that everyone needs to understand is the minute you put it in, you can't take it back.
Right. My last question, and I'll, wait, what was my question? Now I totally lost it. Oh, oh yeah, so April, you know, fall goes well, and it gets approved, April 1, I mean, do you think it really would be implemented by September, or is there something that would stand?
I will tell you right now, what happened. If April 2 comes around and we get a positive vote on that following Monday, principals are going to be busy, and they're going to be informing parents of the process. So I think our goal would be is have everything in the queue, ready to roll, once we have information. And that next Monday, I would say that we would, our principals would be very anxious to get things rolling, because they need to find out who these kids are and actually get them in and get them tested and everything else. So I know Dr. Campbell had a follow-up to one of your questions.
Concern as a mom, the last one, it wasn't really in this presentation, but if you saw the presentation last year, and I know that the principals could attest to that too, that it's not purely academic in kindergarten, and the social piece is also important. So there is, you know, there's opportunities for play, there are opportunities for students to foster those social skills, and that's alive and well in kindergarten. It's actually much more manageable with that gift of time to do that in a full-day K model. So I just want to assure you that that does exist, and...
Yeah, I mean, are there, did you look at studies that show pros and cons versus half-day and full-day, or was, are people just so for this that it's like, not even...
I think our own internal research will show the benefits that it has, and so, for sure. And there are studies that will show the benefits of the full-day model, too. I mean, you may find things that oppose it, but overwhelmingly, it's very positive, very positive.
Thank you.
You can Google that, by the way, and you'll find numerous studies stating what was just said. There's at least two that I know of that'll come up right away. That'll be for Harvard University and Brown University. So I welcome you to go home and give it a Google, and I think you'll find it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes?
Hello?
Hello.
Hi.
Megan Kirkham. And for the kids that go through private preschool, I know, like, if you have a child that's born in late August and they're not emotionally ready, there's an opportunity to stay another year in private preschool. When we were little, there was something called readiness, and, you know, students that weren't ready went there first. For public preschool, though, there doesn't appear to be any options for that. Like, if your child isn't on an IEP, they weren't brought to preschool for any, you know, disability or anything, that they just aren't emotionally ready. Is there any, going to be any consideration for those children that are born, like, August 28th, that just missed the cutoff, that just might not be ready for a full-day kindergarten?
Dr. Campbell, you want to take that one?
Sure. We don't have any transitional K programs to speak of in this. We do have parents, though, that make decisions and work with our administration, building principles regarding those decisions. I can speak to individuals that I know, being a Plymouth resident and having children that are older now, that have gone through kindergarten with those late birthdays, and some of them have made decisions to hold their children back and giving them another year of preschool, or even in kindergarten sometimes. I have a daughter who was born August 29. We chose to move her forward. She was the youngest, and, you know, if it was my son, probably would have been a different story.
Yeah, every kid's different.
You know, everyone's unique and different, and you need to look at that, and, you know, but we don't have any specific programs for children with late birthdays in the summer.
Okay, because it's under my assumption, and just speaking with the teachers of preschool, this is my second child going through the public preschool, that it's just so rare to hold a child back in preschool for anything, you know, other than on an IEP. That's just what I've been told, that it's just never happens, and I just, I'm nervous about that, you know, going into this kind of, almost being forced to, forced to like and want full-day kindergarten for my, you know, just-turned-five baby. You know, so I didn't know if there was something being looked at for that.
Just to share, my son, I have a son that's 20, 20 years old, and we kept him back for a second year of preschool. And that was a decision that my wife and I made. It's probably the best decision. He didn't, he didn't think about it at the time. He was upset, because his friends were moving to the next, you know, to kindergarten, but that was the best decision that we made, and it was a decision that we made with the program, you know. So, again, if we had more, you know, our problem is that we don't have a large, we have a preschool program that draws a lot of students, but not to the mass of the kindergarten. So, you know, we don't see a lot of students in the pre. We have a cohort model, peer model. But, again, those decisions you have to make as a parent, you know.
Okay, so that would be something, if I brought it to the attention of the teacher, it would be something that could be discussed, is that, like, it would be an option? It's an option for me?
I think you need to have that discussion with, if you feel he's not ready, and the staff feel he's not ready, that's a discussion that you can have with them, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yep, all the way in the back. Was there one over there? One over there, too, okay.
Hi, my name is Shelley Ireland. I'm the proud parent of three boys, one of which will be in full-day kindergarten in the fall. I think you've done a great job, all the details, budget, staffing, spacing, all of it. I want to encourage you, before you apply for that staffing and make your budget final, I saw additional specialists, which I think is so important. Full disclosure, I am one in another district. You can guess of what. I saw art, I saw music, phys ed, literacy. Health seems to have disappeared in Plymouth, 4K through 5, unless you're South Elementary and you go to South Middle. Anyway, I would encourage you, while you have the opportunity, be adding all these staff under this big blanket or umbrella budget, to please bring health back to the elementary schools, especially if, in this conversation, we're having the opioid crisis conversation. But I would really, as a parent and as a health educator, would really like health brought back, and I see that this is a perfect opportunity to do that.
Yes, Dr. Campbell.
I agree. First, health is extremely important, and I feel that, this is my personal opinion, that the level in which we were addressing it in the past was insufficient, with primarily our fourth and fifth graders. We are looking at that this year, moving forward, how to do that more comprehensively, starting in the early grades, those formative grades. So it is something that is, it's in our goals for this year to look at, how we do that more systemically, to really, to really influence positively our students, both their, you know, their social, emotional, and physical well-being. Absolutely.
I would suggest certified health teachers while you're at it, rather than the piecemeal. Can a phys ed teacher teach it? Can the second-grade teacher work it in? To really go for it while you're, while you've got that opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, over on this side, you want to make a comment?
Hi, I'm Sherri Weeks, and I think you guys are also doing a great job. You have a lot of children in this town to educate a huge square-mile area to get those children, and I think you've done a fabulous job. I have children in their 20s and a four-year-old. I have a couple of questions. 18 to 22 students per class, is that what we're currently dealing with, with the kindergarten?
Yes.
And how many paraprofessionals are there with those students?
There will be one.
One?
Yes.
Okay.
Per class.
And that will continue with the full-day as well?
Yes.
One?
We budgeted for that, yes.
How does this affect children with an individualized education plan? How does that, putting them in the full-day kindergarten, taking them from a more personalized, a smaller group, to a larger group?
Sure. One of the things that we were really careful to do is make sure that we had provisions for the percentage of students that would come to us on the full-day K program that have IEPs. So we've included staff to be able to help accommodate that and help with transition, because we know that not every kid has the same profile with IEP. We want to make sure that the supports that we give them, there are enough staff to be able to accommodate that. So one of the things that you have to also keep in mind is, we have existing staff that are in our buildings now that can also support when needed. So in the plan and the model, we've consulted with our special education director and her staff. They've put together what they believe is a specification that would really accommodate for the students that we have with anticipated IEPs and needs within those IEPs.
Would we, as parents, be able to see that before we spoke with our representatives in town, before this all came, before the meeting?
Could you explain that a little bit more?
Would we be able to have access to all of that information prior to speaking with our town representatives going forward to town?
As far as the numbers, the model, I mean, if you want to come and visit a full-day K classroom now, you'd be more than welcome to do that.
I'd be very interested to see how all of the different things are addressed in the classroom?
Sure.
With time and with the people who are available in the classroom.
If you were to look at any of our full-day K programs that we offer today, what we're doing is we're replicating those programs in the program that we are proposing tonight. So it would probably be, if you, we can arrange for you to come in and sit down and talk with the staff that we have there now, and if you're interested in really understanding how they work with children on a daily basis, needs that come up, the transitions, the kind of supports that we have, I think that would be fine. It would, you know, it would be, it would be fine for you to come and visit. Keep in mind that we've built our program based on what we believe is a model program, not a program that we're making do. So that's what our aim is.
My child is currently at Mount Pleasant, and we've been very satisfied with what's taking place there. The only other question I have is, is to roll this out next September. People who, or families such as mine, that have a private plus the public school aspect, our private school aspect needs to know, before this even goes to town meeting, what our plan is. How do we address that as, or is there some way that we can work with the school system to address that?
I haven't anticipated that question, but it is true.
They need to know, like, the beginning of March, what our plan is for next year.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, there's absolutely no way to move town meeting up. You know, we're really, our hands are tied until it's funded. Now, we can do the best of planning. We can try to reach out to the schools that do offer a private K program. That's a really difficult one to give you an answer on. It really is, because it's, you know, if we could have the ability to get this thing approved in a quicker period of time, I know we would, we would try to do that if it survived tonight, but unfortunately, the April town meeting mark is something that everyone looks at, and town meeting really enjoys the opportunity to really understand what they're funding.
I'm a huge proponent of full-day kindergarten, but I have some reservation of it starting next year, and that is definitely one of the reasons, is to try to get it so quickly into place for the families that have to make decisions prior to this being funded. It's kind of not fair to the schools and the families. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Yep, come on. Anybody else after this one? Okay. Oh, and over here, too.
Hi, Michelle Sharath. Might be slightly off-topic, but one of the points that I heard earlier was that the attendance or the number of students has actually decreased. And, not to be blunt, but is that speaking to the quality of the schooling? Are we losing kids to charter schools and private schools? You can't look around Plymouth without seeing a new housing development go up. I would expect to see the population of the students go up as well.
The numbers of students that, I've been in Plymouth for 17 years. The number of students that are going to privates since I've been here has declined, has dropped. We're keeping more of our students. That's a fact. If you take a look at the school-aged population in New England, Massachusetts in particular, school-aged population has gone down. If you take a look at the community of Plymouth, the community of Plymouth has grown exponentially, and it's with people that don't have children. I think the Pioneers is part of that.
I don't understand.
Sorry, my phone is...
Talking to it.
I didn't do anything to it, so, you know, I believe that there are a number of factors. To be really completely honest with you, our schools are performing better than they ever have. You know, I think our students are engaged, they're happy, we have some excellent staff. There's absolutely no reason why, you know, if people choose to send a kid to a private or a charter, there's obvious reasons. They feel it's a great fit for their family. Some of them are legacy decisions that they make, but to your point, there, we, our numbers are down over time, and it's been a slow progression, and some of them are predictable. If you look at some of the school, one of the reasons why the Massachusetts School Building Authority is very careful about building school buildings is because a lot of communities in Massachusetts build school buildings based on what they thought the future populations would be, and there are communities right now in Massachusetts that have schools that are half-empty. And it's expensive to live in Massachusetts, and I think people have realized that. I think that's one of the determining factors of growth in Massachusetts. But, again, parents and teachers, excuse me, parents have options that they didn't have 10 years ago, 15 years ago, and I believe that even with those transition, transitional changes that parents have, I believe we're doing a good job of keeping our students that really want to stay in our schools.
Secondly, thank you. What will, will there be any changes going forward with the half-day program if, for some reason, this doesn't get implemented or passed this time? You know, will you then go for it?
Yeah.
For the next year, and just the half-day program will stay the same for now?
Yep, if we, what we do is, we would, we would take a look at logistics and offer more sections, most likely, of full-day K. It has to be funded, so we'd charge tuition. The problem that you have is, we're getting to the, we would, we would get to the point that we would have the situation of haves and have-nots, so we'd have the parents and families that can actually afford the full day. They would actually enroll like they, like they do now. We do, we do, we have taken vouchers in the past for students, but, again, we would, we would look at, moving forward, with the half-day program, fee-for-service, and we'd look at trying to increase those sections like we have every year.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, let me do right here, and then we'll come over to here.
Hi, my name's Cara Tompkins. I just wanted to say thank you for bringing full-day kindergarten to the board for approval. I'm really excited about it. My son was in the lottery for full-day. We had a great experience. He was excited about school every day, and I hope that my daughter can, who's coming up in the fall, can go to full-day also. So I hope that you approve it. I know a lot of parents who are not able to come tonight that are also excited about full-day, and I would just like to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
My name's Jim Quinlan, and I'm the proud father of three children. I had my first child did the half-day program, and then I was fortunate enough to win the lottery, and my daughter went through the full-day program, and we noticed a significant difference between the two in the transition from kindergarten to first grade. And we have our third child, who is going to be enrolling in the fall, and they'll be doing full, full-day kindergarten either way. But one of the challenges that I have, or that I think this town is going to have, is that we look at the housing prices, and they haven't even bounced back from their 2006 levels yet, but we have seen taxes in this town go up by over 80% that same timeframe. And, Doctor, you had mentioned how much, 1.44 million-dollar increase. How much does that increase the average Plamothians' tax bill by?
We actually have not run that information, but we can get that.
Okay.
Okay. We have not included that typically. What happens is, our budget is presented to the town finance director, and she will do an overall projection of what the increase means as a package. So what we can do is, if, we can actually pull that out to see what that cost is for the taxpayer.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the board. Any further...
I like to applaud the administration for their work on this. When I joined the board in 2009, only had moved to Plymouth eight years earlier and I was shocked that we didn't have full day kindergarten at the time. My son was in preschool and when I kind of mentioned it to the administration, they weren't overly optimistic that that would ever happen. And, you know, we brought it back to them multiple times and charged them to find a way to get it done. It's outside the box and you got it done. So I just want to let everyone know I'm supportive of the, of the proposal and I'm optimistic that we can get it done.
Very good. Any, Dr. Sorenson?
This is an action item?
Yes, it is. I need a motion if.
I'm, I'm going to move that we approve the recommendation of administration to incorporate the full day kindergarten costs into our 16, 17 budget.
And a second, Ms. Hunt seconds it? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Now, now we did the hard part. We got it rolling, right? So now everybody that's here has got to show up at the caucuses and the selectmen meetings and the town meeting and we have to follow through now and get it done. Okay?
When is the selectman meeting? Is there a date?
They'll have, we don't have the dates yet. I don't think they know them yet. They'll, they'll publish what their dates are. You can go on the town website, you'll see the schedule for all the meetings. I'm sure Mr. Harvard from the old colony would be publishing something in his, but long before town meeting about what all the scheduled steps are. Okay? Yes, do you have something?
I just wanted to say that, to add to what Dennis has said, that we can't do it alone. We do need you to be able to move this foot forward and, and have it happen. So please, please get invested in it a little and, and help us out.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. Now we're going to move on to the rest of our agenda. So if, you won't hurt our feelings if you.
This is so nice.
Actually, if you all leave, you will hurt our feelings. Five minutes, we'll take a five minute break.
It's a laundry.
Good evening. And now we're up to Hedge Elementary School, School Improvement Plan.
Thank you. My name is Kristen Wilson. I'm the principal of Hedge Elementary School. This is my third year at Hedge and it's actually about my 12th year in the town of Plymouth. So I didn't realize I was here that long. I just want to thank you all. It was a wonderful full day kindergarten presentation as an advocate for early childhood. I'm very excited to see that come to play in the near future, hopefully. So thank you. Hedge School used to have full day kindergarten and because our numbers have increased, we don't have one right now. So we look forward to be able to offer our families that in the future. So beside me, I have some members of my school council. I have Ms. Katie Tessitore. She is a third grade teacher at Hedge. Ms. Christina Brown, who is a parent of, I have Hedge School. And over at the end is Karen Cloddy, who is currently a first grade teacher at Hedge and was a full day kindergarten teacher at Hedge. And behind us in the cheerleading crowd is Mr. James Marr, who's available to provide us support as we move forward. I was a little disappointed that the crowd left because I thought they were here for us today. So, but with that, we'll move forward. So when I came to Hedge, one of the important pieces for me was to really build a sense of community. Our staff is primarily a new staff to the building. At least 75% of our, our staff are new to Hedge. So we really needed to come together as a group and some of these pictures display some of the things that we have done to build a sense of community. We want our kids to want to come to school. School doesn't have to be fun all the time, but it really, there should be some fun times for the kids to want to come to school and we want to make those memories for the kids. One of our favorite traditions is the Thanksgiving feast, which is on the bottom. And over to the right, you'll see some students at the beach and that was a new tradition we started last year where we took the entire school except for our kindergarten kiddos and we walked to Nelson Park and we spent the day at the beach. And those are the memories that our students are going to remember and those are some of our fifth graders that are now here at P C A S building castles. And what great, talk about teamwork and problem solving and a social experience for the kids. It was a great opportunity. So I want to tell you a little bit about Hedge and then we're going to dive right into our school improvement plan and be able to get everyone home for the evening. As you know, Hedge is a walking school. At the time when I wrote the school improvement plan, we had 229 students enrolled at the school. We've lost a couple of kids, so those numbers are down a little bit. Through our discovery of, of looking at the data this year as a council, we discovered that a lot of students have exited and entered the building, primarily in the last two years since I've been there. About 12% of our students are new to Hedge, so that means we have a large group of, a pretty solid cohort of children that have not been at Hedge their entire career. Primarily when you look at our current fifth grade class, we have 23 students in that fifth grade class and only 10 of them attended Hedge from kindergarten. So 13 of our kids are new and eight of those came to us last, from this year and last year. So when you look at the data, you have to think about how many of those kids have been with us the entire, their entire educational career. Now, in retrospect, we have a large group of students that have long committed roots to Hedge and have generations of their families that have gone through Hedge. So we have a very solid population of students that have been there for generations and then we have a transient population that have come and gone. Right now, we're at about 63% of our students are receiving free and reduced lunch. We are the highest in the district, creating a school-wide Title I school. We have 12 classrooms, so we, we took down the wall that was dividing our special ed room and our computer room and we added another teacher to accommodate the increased enrollment. Now, we did anticipate that we were going to have higher numbers this year and they are a little lower than what we anticipated, but we do have about 10 children at Cold Spring attending full day kindergarten. So those kids will come back to us next year in first grade. 18% of our students are currently on individual education plans and 3% are on 504 plans. They have a documented disability. 16% of our children receive, our English, English is their second language. Last spring, 73% of our students read at or above grade level in the spring of 2015. And right now, looking at, and that was in the spring when we did our benchmark assessments and looking at the children when they came in the fall, we're at 62% are currently reading at or above grade level. And 53% of our students in the spring scored 70% or above in their math, public, Plymouth Public School Assessment. So our numbers are, are not as high as we would like them to be and our plan is going to propose some strategies to increase those numbers. So here's the, here's the data from the last couple of years. Just want to highlight for you, if you look on the columns, the, the top one is math and if you look at the fall and then it goes to spring. Now, the math assessment is a true post, pre and post test. So the children are being tested on information that they haven't received in the fall and then they're instructed all year long and in the spring, they're tested to see how much they've obtained. So you can see over time, the students have grown. Now, our goal is to get those students to 70% or above as part of our school improvement plan. In fourth grade in 2014, we did that. Last year in the spring, our first graders made it and we're going to really strive really hard to get there again. Now, if you look on the bottom, those are our benchmark assessment data's going back to fall of 2012. Again, if you look at the spring columns and the fall columns, you will see that in the fall, the students are coming into us at a lower percentage and in the spring, they are leaving at a higher percentage. So we are making gains and that's the good news. Our students are improving when they are with us. I just wanted to show you a little bit of where we're at in regards to the park assessment. Historically, Hedge has always been the bottom of Plymouth Public Schools. We, we score in the lower level and we're, we, did I skip twice? Nope. Sorry. Here we go. Where, we've creeped up a little bit in third grade. We're, we're, we're down to the top, the bottom three and, oops. And here we go. If you look down to our math, our fourth graders, we are not at the bottom for our fourth grade math. So we're anticipating we're going to start creeping up as we move forward. So how are we going to do that? So looking at where we're at in our academic achievement of our students, because of our mandate, our state mandate, our federal mandates, they're looking at us and holding us accountable based on those state assessments. So that's how the state is looking at us. So our goal is based on that we are going to increase our student achievement in math and reading, but acknowledging that achievement is not the only outcome that we want for our students. We want other outcomes for our students. So those three pillars underneath that one goal are the other outcomes that we want for our students. We want our students in goal two to feel safe and have a supportive school. We also want to respond to interventions that we're giving, providing for them and we also want our families, our students to have supportive families that we communicate with. If we don't target those three pillars, we're not going to reach the top number one goal. So it really all works together. Underneath that is a solid foundation of our students, our parents, our teachers, our staff and our general community. So how can we all come together to support the kids at Hedge to reach that goal of academic achievement? One of the texts that we've been looking at is Teaching with Poverty in Mind with Eric Jensen. And he talks about some of these, these pieces that need to be in place for the children that are living in poverty. And thinking of Hedge, we have 63% of our students who are receiving free and reduced lunch. So it's very real for us at Hedge. It's, it's almost double the percentage in the district. So it's a very large pocket of students and we really need to address some of those needs. So those ideas from that book are going to be embedded into our school improvement plan. Our teachers have spent a lot of time the last couple of years looking at trauma in learning. And we just had a great professional development last week, the week before, excuse me, reviewing some of the things that Hedge staff have already put into place. One of those general themes is looking at the whole child. And I know you've heard this before, so I, I just want to give one example of this, is we need to address these four different domains of the child in order to get them where they need to go. And we always talk about the child that's not making academic progress, but we have plenty of students that are making academic progress, but they're still lacking in one of those other four domains. For example, you might have a student that's a very strong academic student, but it's feeling a little maybe anxious or might be having some, some peer relationships. And so if you look in that, that square up there, up in the right-hand corner, that emotional and behavioral piece, she might be struggling a little bit, but academically is holding her own. So how are we going to get that child to feel, to be solid in all four categories? Well, we're going to look at the child's strengths. So we look at the child's physical well-being. We know the child is, you know, well-cared-for, fed, comes to school clothed every day, doesn't have any major illnesses, so physically the child's doing okay. We know the child is doing well academically, so that's a strength. Peer relationships, the child has friends, but not a lot of friends. So how can we get that child to feel a little bit more comfortable emotionally? Well, let's use the child's academic strength, use the peers and maybe the child could do some peer tutoring and work with a younger student that might be struggling or even a peer that might be struggling academically. That will boost, that can boost the child and, and fill that, that void in that domain of emotional behavioral well-being. Now, that's just one example, but every time we look at a, a student in our school, we're looking at the child in these four pieces and that takes a lot of time. So as we go, as our presenters present tonight, they're going to talk about how we've embedded time into our day for teachers to be able to look at the kid as, this kid as whole children and how we can fill those gaps as we move forward. So let's get started. We're going to talk about that goal one, that higher arching goal of increasing student achievement in math and miss, in reading and Ms. Tessitore will begin with that.
Okay, so our first goal is to increase student achievement in math and reading. So I'm going to tell you a couple of ways that we plan to do this. Our first goal is that we're going to incorporate some of the objectives from the student school improvement plan, goals numbers two, three and four that Christina and Karen will speak about. Something else we currently do and would like to continue to do is provide after-school tutoring and enrichment opportunities. Currently, we have opportu, we have opportunities after school for students who are below or approaching grade level standards to have tutoring opportunities. We also provide Hedge Academy, which is an enrichment program. Some things we've done is allow students to learn new languages. We do crafts, robotics, basketball and floor hockey. We'd like to continue providing summer enrichment and educational programs for students. We'd like students to continue to be a part of the Title I summer program. In the past, we've opened up the library and allowed students to come in and check out books over the summer. Some teachers have done outdoor sports and activities and crafts over the summer as well. We'd also like to continue to work with and revise our response to intervention model to monitor, monitor student achievement. We'd like to identify some students that are not currently receiving support from remedial instruct, remedial instruction, support and we'd like to provide those students with opportunities for more support inside the classroom and, and targeting some of the Common Core standards and standards that have not been met on the park assessments. We'd also like to continue to use some intervention programs like the Level Literacy Program and Wilson. We'd also like to rebuild student operating systems. So what that would look like is providing activities that increase students' working memory, processing skills and attention. We'd like to continue to use the teacher evaluation system that helps us monitor, observe and evaluate and provide feedback to teachers, making sure that we're providing a high-quality education for the students and covering grade level standards. We'd also like to implement a school-wide reading incentive with the help of the PTA. We hope that students read a certain number of books and they'll get a free pass to Six Something else we'd like to do is develop and implement a school truancy plan to support and reduce the number of non-excused absences and tardies. Currently, we have an incentive program for students with perfect attendance each month and they receive some sort of little award during our awards assembly. We'd like to continue using the third grade math shaboozie, which is a program that we borrowed from Manomet. It's an incentive program that builds automaticity with multiplication facts. I personally have seen my students grow with that. 80% of the students last year passed the big shaboozie. And we'd like to use, we'd like to at least investigate incorporating a bi-weekly enrichment block that focuses on problem-based learning. We'd like to enhance science instruction, so we'd utilize the new science standards and develop new units of study and provide more hands-on science activities inside the classroom. And finally, we'd like to provide family enrichment opportunities on, during the school day, evening and weekends.
I just want to add a little fun fact for you as, as you're looking at these objectives to, to support the goal. 38 of our students last year, out of the current 229 students that I identified when I wrote this stu, school improvement plan, out of those 229, 38 students were absent 12 or more days last year. Some were absent as much as 18 for a variety of reasons. We did have some inclement weather. Our students walked to school sometimes close to a mile and it was challenging to get the kids to school. But out of those 38 students, 28 of them did not reach our benchmark goals in reading. So we are seeing a direct correlation to attendance and achievement within our students. Additionally, 42% of our students currently are reading at below grade level and 26% of those students are receiving specific interventions during the school day. So we have a large number of students that are not receiving interventions by an interventionist. So it's very important for our teachers to be able to provide that additional support within the regular classroom and also the after-school program helps with that. So now I think we'll go to goal two. And that is to create a safe and supportive school and Christina Brown is going to speak to that.
Hello. I'd like to talk about goal two, which is a supportive and safe school. And I think one of the reasons this is so important is because there is an affective filter that impacts all learning and that students learn better when they are socially and emotionally ready to learn. And so it's very important for their academics, for the school to be a, a place where they feel safe and supported. So one of the main things that's happening this year is responsive classroom and really supporting the teachers in feeling more confident with strategies and tools that support, how they support students in feeling safe and connected in their So one of the main things that's happening this year is responsive classroom and really supporting the teachers in feeling more confident with strategies and tools that support how they support students in feeling safe and connected in their classrooms. And so that includes morning meeting and energizers and helping students sort of problem-solve how they deal with situations that come in the classroom. Having behavioral interventions for those students in the school that have been identified as having issues with self-regulation and really training specifically for those students to support how they monitor and self-manage themselves. Continuing with the PBIS initiatives to really work with recess and how people, both the school staff as well as the parent volunteers, I know that Mr. Marr is one of those volunteers. And my son was very upset when he had to miss a Tuesday recess because Mr. Marr is there, and he facilitates the football program, and that is very, very important. And so I've learned that on Mondays and Tuesdays, you are not to schedule appointments that cause him to miss Mr. Marr's recess time. And this was something that I was unaware of until I made that mistake. So how, especially children who need to be very active, think about the importance of learning to play with each other and collaborate during recess time is really important. How discipline issues are tracked and how sort of the places where different discipline issues happen, creating quiet spaces, positive language, sensory tools, and also really helping students work with their behavior. All of these are things that both create a safe and welcoming environment, but also are part of the 21st century skills that lead to students being able to more effectively collaborate, to self-manage, and to have the critical thinking for how they get out of situations when things do come up in life and in school. Thank you.
Just an interesting component to that is we looked, as a school, we looked at the students that are struggling with regulating their self during the school day. And it's a small amount compared to the general population. It's about 5% to 8% of our students on behavior plans are working with some sort of behavior intervention. But it does take up a lot of our time. And the tricky part of Hedge is there's one principal and there's one school psychologist. So it's challenging if the school psychologist and myself would like to get together and conduct a meeting, or if we have an IAP meeting. We struggle to have trained support staff to respond to the needs of the other students. So we've been working really hard with classroom teachers to be able to accommodate those kids. But in reality, it is challenging. So this year, we've piloted a board-certified behavior analysis that is working with our school twice a week under a grant fund. And it's been fabulous having her in the building those two days. She works directly with classroom teachers. She helps them create environments for students to be successful. She helps do functional behavior analysis for our students, observations, developing behavior plans, working with the families, actually taking the time to teach staff how to implement a behavior plan and model for us what to do in a situation. So we would like to see that move forward and have a little bit more of that support in our building. And that's part of our goal, how to make that happen in the future. Our next goal is implementing an effective response to intervention process, which is a carryover from the last two years. We've been working on this for a couple of years. And Karen Cloddy is going to take over from here.
Hello. Our third goal is the implementation of the Response to Intervention Process. Our RTI model begins by effectively identifying students into a three-tiered model. All students in Tier One are receiving high-quality education instruction at their level. Then students are selected through several different data collection methods to receive additional supports in Tier Two and Tier Three. By effectively identifying students who need additional supports, we can accelerate their learning by giving them differentiated instruction. These supports can be provided in several different mediums, including support personnel, special education teachers, or classroom teachers. This is our second year of the new model, RTI model. We continue to work diligently to improve our new model. We are holding monthly RTI meetings with a grade-level team of teachers and administrators' support staff and our literacy and math coaches. This is a new part of the model, and it really is an effective use of their time and our time to collaborate and able to flesh out different ideas and resources that will plan for this new tiered instruction. All teachers are then aware of the student's strengths and weaknesses. As Mrs. Wilson was showing earlier about the whole child, we really are able to sit and collaborate together to discuss each area of strength and weakness so that we can target our instruction more effectively. This is such an important part of the process because it streamlines how we roll out our intervention for these students. Our coaches are also being supportive within the classroom, and they are able to collaborate with the classroom teachers to assist with all the students in receiving direct remedial and support. We will also provide first steps training for the remaining two classroom teachers. And all of these efforts, we hope, are going to continue to drive our method of instruction for each and every child at Hedge.
Thank you, Karen. One of the pieces that we've seen so far this year that's been really effective is having our literacy and math coaches come to these meetings, and they really enjoy it. And they're the experts in the field, and they need to be part of the conversation. So we've been able to schedule the coaches to be in our building on specific days so that we're able to schedule these meetings on specific days. And we have them planned out for the year with requesting subs for release time for the teachers. So let's move on to our last goal. Unfortunately, Mrs. Roberts was going to speak to Goal Number Four, and she's unable to attend this evening, so I'm going to speak for her. Goal Number Four is to provide opportunities to support and communicate with families. And let me get that to four. There we go. So this is a district-wide goal. We just had a great forum last week with a large group of parents and community members to talk about this parent engagement piece. In parent engagement, we always say it's hard to collect data on engagement because engagement encompasses such a large spectrum of components. Now, one of the things that we've looked at is we feel like we're pretty good at communicating with parents. We do all calls. We have a Facebook page that we've been using. We used it even before it started rolling out this year. We've had it for two years, and last year, we really used it a lot. We do letters. We do monthly newsletters. We're a walking school, so we have a unique opportunity to see a lot of the parents on a day-to-day basis. So I think at Hedge, we have a pretty significant parent, involved parents into our school. So we want to do more. And there's a group of parents that we're having trouble reaching. And so we wanted to focus some of our efforts to how to reach those families that are hard to engage. And so we started looking at what are the barriers to them? And it helped us, we looked at Maslow's hierarchy of need, and we looked, and some of our families are really struggling with that basic needs. They're not getting their basic needs met. So we thought, all right, let's do something different. Let's think out of the box, and let's try to reach families by helping them get their basic needs met. And so this year, we've rolled out a food pantry. We're looking at, we're getting food. We're working with South Shore Community Action Council. We pick up food every Monday morning. And every six weeks, we are going to do a, one big food pickup for families or drop-off. We have a lot of families without transportation, so we're delivering the food to them. And then we also initiated a Friday backpack program for students. So we have 40 families that we identified. And every other week, those families get a backpack of food that the kids, they get a backpack, they go home. It's quick food that our kids can feed themselves, and it has some food for the family as well. We also have a clothing bank in our school. Families donate clothes, but they're also able to come and get clothes if they need it. So these opportunities are great opportunities for us to engage with our families. We can have good conversations. We can provide support. A lot of our families are trying to connect with outside agencies for financial support or housing. And so we're able to help with the paperwork process. We're able to deliver things back and forth. And it's been really great. It's been a great way to engage the families, and they're much more comfortable coming into the building because we already have developed a relationship with some of our families. So we're going to continue to do that. The other thing is going through the PowerPoint is our staff are almost at 100% for teachers with websites. So we're going to continue working on that. We have a large group of families that really utilize the web to gain information, and we need to keep up with that. Classroom celebrations have been key. In the first slide, there was a picture of four children in, I think that was your class, Katie. They were doing a poetry presentation to their families. So very informal, first grade is planning one for a couple of weeks, some sort of curriculum celebration, invite the parents in just for like an hour, and get them in the classroom, and they get to see their kids do some sort of presentation. And it's been really nice to have folks do that. Again, we'll continue with our Facebook page, our website, our Blackwood Calls. We really want to put a Family Math Night together. It's been something our parents have been asking for a couple of years. We planned one last year, and due to the snow, we had to cancel it. And then we had no parking for months in order to accommodate all of our families. So we're going to try to do that. We also did parent workshops last year. We hired a parenting educator to come into the school and hold parent workshops for families. And we have that scheduled for a six-week program again this winter, and we'll do food and childcare for families. And then one of our new goals is we want a family information area. It's a little tricky at Hedge because we don't really have a perfect spot where there's enough room to have families view a family information area. We are doing pickups for our food pantry in the staff lounge, which is right off the nurse's office. So there's a great little nook right there, and we're going to try to utilize that space to do parent information. So we'll have paperwork readily available for parents if they want to, like SNAP information, housing information, parenting ideas, things of that nature. We also have our lending library every other Tuesday. And Mrs. Rush, our school psychologist, has worked together with agencies to come and be present at those experiences. So we did one on getting help for the holidays. We always have homework help ideas. So we're trying to engage families in a variety of means to meet all the different families that are out there. So that, and the one other piece that we really need to work on is we do have a large Brazilian Portuguese population. And we're, as a district, we're looking into this. We're really trying to continue to translate our documents, our newsletters, and it would, we really hope at some point to have a person in our building that speaks Brazilian Portuguese so we can have immediate access to communication. So with that, thank you, everyone, for helping me out with the presentation, and I'm here for questions.
You did a great job. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Not really a question, but I'm very impressed with everything that you're doing, especially with the community outreach. And I think the food pantry is a great idea because I believe St. Mary's just recently closed there.
Yes, they did.
Which is so important because, and that's good for me to know too, because I'm on the board of another charitable organization that we refer people to. Are you, do you ever, we've been talking a lot about community service and our other students, our high school students, and I actually know of a sports team right now that's looking for something. Do you have opportunities for them to help you with the food pantry? Are you looking for that kind of help right now? Is it something that I can suggest that they contact you?
Definitely. I've reached out to some schools already, particularly with our after-school tutoring program. I really would like to have older students tutoring the younger students. I've contacted the RSVP for our retired seniors to help volunteer with that program. We do need help with our food pantry. We have a parent volunteer that helps pack the bags for us right now. But as it grows, we're going to need more help. So I'd love for you to forward that information to us.
My daughter's team right now is actually looking for a community service project to work on, and we've been tossing some ideas around. And I think this is probably a perfect opportunity for them to help you out.
Great. The community's been wonderful. We've had people just walk to Hedge and offer support for our food pantry. The church around the corner came one day and said, "We heard you, you need snacks for your kids." And they brought us boxes of snacks in little containers with juice boxes and a snack and a little note for the kids. There's a lot of businesses in town that have donated money for our food pantry, and we had someone pressure us to write a fuel grant.
Nobody in particular.
So Laura Vash wrote that grant, and that's to support our food pantry and our recess initiative to help train our volunteers and recess staff.
Congratulations for doing that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Vash.
On your backpack program for children, is that recently started?
We started it this year.
This year? Okay. Because I'm involved in a bigger way in trying to implement that program out in the community for all elementary schools. So that's very good that it's gotten to Hedge. But only every other week?
Every other week. We have 40 children identified, so we do 21 week and 20 the other. And with more funding for more food and more staff to help pack the backpacks, we'd be able to do more children.
Now, you're doing it through the Food Bank Warehouse?
Yes. And private donations through community businesses.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Because I thought it was a weekly thing that they had done in the other schools, what the couple that they'd done before. So hopefully, it'll agree so that you can have it. They can eat every weekend.
Yes.
That's what I'm hoping for.
Dr. Sorensen.
It's a real need in the community, but one word of caution, and I think you touched it a second ago, and that is when it grows. Because it could get out of hand. There are, the food pantries are closing around here. The food banks are not working as well as they should, at least I know on Cape Cod. So there are needs. So I get a little bit worried that your Friday group is going to get larger and larger and larger, and we're, you know, that's not what we do for a living here.
Right. We're starting small.
But I think he's concerned he wants you to stay small.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
You're concerned that it's going to start to cut into her normal nine-to-five job.
Yeah, I don't know whether you're going to fit into your week as it grows. That's my caution, it's going to grow.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You, too. Alternative program. Guys are waiting anxiously.
They're anxious.
I know you're well aware of Mr. Sharpentier, and he's the director of Alternative Program. And Rachel Babcock is one of the staff members who's been instrumental in looking at how our program is moving forward. So tonight, he's going to be presenting an Alternative Program update. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Sharpentier.
Excellent. I'm not texting. I have the presentation up on my phone. I'm Josh Sharpentier. I'm the director of Alternative Programs.
Rachel Babcock, Alternative Programs Coordinator.
We're here tonight, like Dr. Mas said, to give a program update on how things are going and what we're looking to do in the future. So right now, what we have for our current initiatives is we have the Alternative High School Program. We do a lot of dropout re-engagement. We have online and face-to-face credit recovery programs. A big thing that we're also getting into right now is the proactive success coaching, which we'll talk about later on in the presentation, summer school, and then some long-term planning things as well. So it's kind of a presentation at a glance, so to speak, on the first slide. Highlights right now for the program, the biggest update we have for you guys is we did move from Plymouth South High School to Plymouth North High School. It was, you know, several meetings took place to come up with the best decision and which location would be best. There were some factors that we felt would be much better at North. One of the biggest ones was transportation. GATRA was willing to provide some level of transportation home for our student population, which, as Kristin touched on with her School Improvement Plan, transportation is a huge barrier for this population. It's right off the bat, I know it's only November, but it has drastically improved our attendance for students who live in that area where we can get the transportation to. We're constantly working with GATRA to try and provide more transportation. But as you guys know, Plymouth's a big town, so to provide more transportation, it's difficult, to say the least. Another big improvement that we made by moving to Plymouth North High School that allowed us to offer video production with Dan Riley. I was hoping that we had one or two of our students working tonight, but we don't. That was, the students are really loving that program, Introduction to Gaming with Zulama and Sue Harrison. And we also offer a Introduction to Hospitality class right now with a partnership completely funded through the Chamber of Commerce and the Jump Stop Program. So that's, you know, three great opportunities for our students that they never had in the past, exposing them to fields that they wouldn't normally be exposed to, something that could lead to meaningful employment later on that kids are really getting into. They're loving it, especially the hospitality. They're loving it, especially the hospitality management. The students are going to leave with CPR certification, Chokesaver certification, and Serve Safe. So as you guys are all familiar, that lends itself well to employment in this town especially. Touched on the collaboration with GATRA already. We were able to provide transportation home to students in the north section of town at no cost to the student, which is, like I said, has been a huge improvement for our transportation. This is the first year that we've been able to provide dinner, too, to the students. So we do have a small dinner break built into the schedule. Rachel and I were asked to talk at the DESE Dropout Prevention Conference and some of the great things that the district is doing in regards to dropout prevention with the success coaching model we're using. We're working to develop a lot more partnerships with the community. The community offers a ton of, you know, options that we can get out there and get the students involved in. We're just trying to, we're trying to find the best, the best solutions to get the kids involved in the community at large with the Quincy Colleges, the Cape Cod Community College, everything that's moving down towards Cottage Park. It's, you know, an endless array of options for our student population. We're just trying to tap into those resources.
So we've talked about this when we've been with you guys before, the growth in our program. We were looking from, you know, 28 students four years ago to then 47 to 72. We're at 75 full-time students now, which isn't a huge increase over last year, and that was intentional. It could have been much higher. There's demand for that. But we, with our staffing, we're really careful to make sure that we're not taking on more students than we can adequately serve. And with the move to North, we wanted to make sure that we didn't sort of take on more kids than we could handle. We have 38 potential graduates. We're looking at graduating, I think, 11 in January. And that, and those kids are, will be, those are kids who are in their fifth year, who are ready to graduate, which is great. And then another 22 or so in June. And that doesn't include kids that will come in January. We, as in the past, will take some students in January. We have a waiting list already of kids who are on the referral list for January. This slide sort of shows the fact that that 75 full-time student number doesn't really do justice to the number of kids that are engaged or on our radar. We brought back 23 dropouts last summer through our dropout re-engagement work. And the move to North was instrumental in a lot of that because a lot of those kids are more able to come back now because we're, it's a doable thing for them to get to North where it wasn't doable for them to get to South. We met with more dropouts last summer that we were not able, that we're not, for whatever reason, ready to come back. We will revisit those kids again and again and see if we can continue to reach out and let them know that there is a door open for them to come back. We have 22 kids on the referral list. As of when we did this, on the 19th, there were 22. It's up to 25 now, kids on the referral list. Those people, those kids have all been referred from either North or South, from guidance, counselors, and administrators, and special ed teachers saying this kid is struggling. So we will very soon launch into the process of looking at those kids, meeting with those kids and families, and seeing whether or not it's a good fit for them to come to us. We have had 38 additional referrals from full-time kids that we didn't have the bandwidth to take. And then it also has part-time and summer school numbers. So it's a big number when you add all that up in terms of the number of kids that we're juggling in various ways.
And I think it's also worth pointing out, the 38 students, we didn't have the capacity to take. A lot of the students opted not to come to the alternative program, whether it was, you know, related to they wanted to still play sports, they wanted to, they had an afternoon job they really wanted to keep, they weren't able to provide their own transportation home at 7:15. So it wasn't that we closed the door on those 38 students. There were barriers that they couldn't, they just couldn't attend with the current structure. But I think one of the things that's worth noting, and a lot of people ask us, you know, it's really hard to explain what we do for a living to people. So it's, you know, that 344 touches. We tried to create a visual that explains our philosophy because it's tough to explain. We have students from, you know, it's a miracle that they show up to school on a day-to-day basis, to students who are ready to graduate in January and go on to a four-year degree, and everywhere in between. So it's, you know, we have students who are completely disengaged from school. And a lot of our day is just spent talking to them, getting them to realize the importance of education, getting them to show up the next day, or even to the next class. So it's, at times, it can be a struggle to get the students just to walk through the door. And, you know, as we touched on earlier, it's only Rachel and I have a full-time staff, and we have some great part-time staff who help hold it all together. But it's, and as Kristin touched on with her school improvement plan, we're seeing urban issues come into Plymouth, and it's more and more prevalent as we move on. And, you know, I think the full-day kindergarten is a great option as well because, you know, the research does show that you make more growth. And hopefully, we can educate the students in the mainstream school. But there's always going to be those students who fall into this phase one, phase two, phase three, and phase four, which is essentially phases of disengagement from school. And we're trying to battle that on a daily basis. I'm not going to go through every single slide and read it to you because you guys have it in your handouts. But I do think it's worth noting that we have a student population that, like I said, is anywhere between it's a miracle they show up to school and they're ready to go, they're ready to go on to the real world. And many of them, they work full-time, they financially support their families, their parents to younger siblings. Again, as, I don't know if it was planned for me to go right after Hedge Elementary School, but again, we do have students in our population that it's, they don't know if they're going to have food on the table when they get home. And they have to work so they can get food on the table when they get home.
Which means that those phases are often cyclical. They'll start to make progress, and then they'll slide back. And then they'll start to make progress again, and then they'll slide back. So it's very much an ongoing process of keeping kids re-engaged and moving forward, hopefully on an uphill climb.
So where we are right now, and again, I'm not going to read the whole side, you guys have it, but I think where we are right now, we've made tremendous progress in the last four years as far as, we've really made an effort in, you know, when I came on to the job four years ago, we had a, we had a waiting list of students. It was almost double the student population in the program. So I think we've done a great job of expanding the programs for access for the kids. And I think now we're at that tipping point where we need to focus on not just access for the kids, but a more long-term solution for the students. And I think what that long-term solution looks like is something competency-based, something with full-time staff, something in a separate setting. I think, you know, the student population that we work with on a daily basis needs a lot of wraparound, both academic and social emotional supports. And getting the community involved at large. Like I said, the town of Plymouth offers an array of options for our student population. And just for all students in general, we have some great local organizations who are willing to help. They just don't necessarily know how to help. And I think that us bringing that to the forefront and talking to these local organizations and getting them involved could really prove, you know, drastic measures for our student population.
And I think another piece that's reflected in that slide, too, in several places is the need to be flexible, the need for us to be able to have a rolling admissions, to be able to take, we lose kids sometimes because we can't act fast enough because we're still tied to the semester-based schedule of our mainstream high schools, which is hard because we really only have two entry points for kids. So that's something that we're working on, trying to get closer to a rolling admissions-type model.
And just to, you know, list a few of the organizations that we have, you know, we've worked with, we've talked to several school leaders of model alternative schools, both in the state and out of the state. We try and work very closely to the, with DCF in Plymouth, with Juvenile Probation in Plymouth. I think we've fostered those relationships where we are now in a partnership where we, you know, we have people we can call when we need something at DCF. We have people we can call. We meet with Juvenile Probation on at least a bi-weekly basis to touch base on our students and touch base on what services we can, we can provide the family to better their living situation. And it's, at times, it's better for us to do that than the Juvenile Probation Officer because we're not doing it in a, you know, you have to do this or you're going to be put on probation for another six months. It's a, you know, we're doing this because we want you to get educated, we want you to move on, we want you to get to that phase four and beyond. And that's really the philosophy that we've taken with our entire student population. I just think, like I said, we are at the point where we need to focus on long-term. And so our future plans, I think, is to create a proposal for a long-term, financially sustainable solution for the continuing increasing at-risk population. I think one of the things we are interested in is exploring the option of a charter. I don't think it's out of the question. I think it's something we could look at. We're going to continue to collaborate with local agencies to form the partnerships we can. I mean, the Jump Stop Program, the relationship that we established with the Chamber of Commerce and Kevin O'Reilly proved huge for our student population. They love the hospitality class. And, you know, it just gives them that sense of, you know, I can do this college, I can do this college thing. Because our, a lot of our students think of a 4C's professor as this, this person who they could never take a class there. They see it as an unattainable task, and we're really opening their eyes to it. And even the students who aren't in the class see their peers taking this 4C's class and being successful with it. The other thing we're trying to do right now is we're working to establish a tracking mechanism to talk to 100% of the dropouts. I think that's a lofty goal. It may not seem like a lofty goal. However, it is really hard to go out and track down students who have dropped out of high school. You know, when we went by it quickly to talk about the 23 students that we had re-engaged over the summer, that was, you know, 23 doors. Rachel and I and a couple of the teachers went out and knocked on and met with students in their houses. And it was more than 23 doors because some of them, we showed up and it was the wrong door. So we had to go to, we had to go down the street or to a...
It was a lot of phone calls and text messages and home visits.
It gets interesting.
It was, yeah.
Another thing that we're working to do right now is work with the middle schools because we do realize that there's a need to go down lower, to have a summer school option for the middle schools, to have a vacation school model for the middle schools. Really just trying to expand the reach to the students that we think need more support from the Plymouth schools. And I think, I think we can do it. So at that time, I think we'll open it up to questions, and hopefully, nobody has to vote to go past 10.
10:30.
Oh, is it 10:30? All right, well, I'll get comfortable.
Questions?
As I've said every time, every time you guys have come here, you provide a great service, and you do it very well. And I applaud the fact that you want to save everybody, but you can't save everybody. And I'm sincere when I say that. Your phase one students, as you wrote here, need an intense amount of personal attention. That must consume a huge part of your week. All those referrals must consume another huge, because you have to evaluate every single one of those referrals to see if they're appropriate. And then, you know, it's the parable of the lost sheep. Then you have to run out and find the lost sheep and bring them back. I mean, you can't save everybody.
Right. We know.
I think that's why, when I had touched on that it's really hard to explain what we do for a living, it's really separated out into a couple of jobs. One of them is to run the current alternative programs, and the other one is to plan for long-term. And I agree with you that we can't save everyone, but I think we are doing a good job saving a lot of them. And I think we can save a lot more with a change in delivery.
And I think, I think our philosophy is kind of for every kid to feel like we tried to save them, whether we ultimately do or not, the ball's in their court. But I want, we want for every kid to feel like we tried to save them.
Right, or that there's somebody that is trying.
And that they had, the door is open, and that the door will always be open until we run out of time. And that piece, you know, I think we definitely, you have to compartmentalize and prioritize in terms of juggling all that. But I think the important part is for kids and families to feel as if we don't give up.
And I think the other thing, too, with the, Dr. Sorensen, with the phase one students is sometimes the best thing we can do for a phase one student is to leave them alone.
Yeah.
Because they need to decide on their own that it's time. And, you know, we have cell phone numbers of students. Rachel and I will intentionally go to a local restaurant where we know a student's working. "Oh, hey, sorry, I didn't know you worked here."
But I think, but I think what you have going for you is even though these students cannot see themselves getting a high school diploma, they all know the importance of it. I've never met a student who said to me, "Oh, their high school diplomas are not important."
Never.
So they all know it. But it's getting that, getting them from that place. They have to do it with their feet.
Absolutely.
And some of them are in such holes by the time we get them, for a million different reasons, that it's a matter of restoring hope that that's possible first. They have to believe that it's possible. And so that's a lot of the work there goes into that.
Great job.
We could use, we could use help in the summertime if you want to come out with this, Dr. Sorensen.
I know, it's fun.
Anybody else? Thank you for the update. Pretty soon, though, next time you come, let's put a side-by-side of, you know, charter versus non-charter, or solution A versus solution B. But let's start talking some numbers and some specifics.
Sure.
I think the public's ready for it. Let's, let's get it out there.
Sure.
But just tonight, we heard about full-day kindergarten, restoring the health program, alternative program. I mean, and none of these programs are bad programs. They all come with a cost. So we need to figure out what the costs are and how we can juggle things.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. It's always a pleasure.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
We're down to the last item, which is the strategic plan.
Dr.? Yes. As you recall, last week, we reviewed the strategic plan. We had some input from the committee. And based on that input, we have created an executive summary, which really goes over some background information on the particular goal, and actually cites some research to actually correspond with the goal. So if you take a look at the strategic plan, you can see that we have included an executive summary, which does a good job of encapsulating the purpose of the plan, the different goals, the research behind the goal, some research behind the goal, and actually some of the information that we collected from our stakeholders as we worked through the process. So some of the comments that we had last week were really centered around the executive summary. I believe that our team has compiled a summary that really would allow the, any person that really turns to the strategic plan, if they turn to the first few pages, they can get a good understanding of what's within the body of the full document. We think that met that objective. And then if you were to page down to, I think it was Goal 3, we actually, was it Goal, what was that? Goal, Goal 2.0, excuse me, Goal 2, Objective 2.3. We actually changed the language on that. I know Ms. Badger had brought up some, some level of desire to include our other global partners. And we actually changed Objective 2.0 to Read Enhanced Community and Family Awareness of the Educational Partnership between Plymouth Mass and Plymouth UK and other global partners. We felt that that would really take a look at not only Plymouth UK, but Spain, France, you know, all the other partners that we've created over time, Japan. So I believe that that, you know, really covers that particular component. And we can hopefully integrate that into more and more of our features as we look at our planning moving forward. So with that, I know we did not get to the point where we felt this was prepared to move forward for approval. So at that point, Mr. Begley, I turn it back to you for comments or any other thoughts that you have.
Anybody have any comments, questions? I'm very happy with what you wrote. It provides the content as time goes by for people to read this document, just like the first one, and be able to see why the decisions were made. On 2.2, Objective 2.2, it's page 17, I think, the way mine's laying out. Just change that, you were going to change the state of the state?
Yes. We had some other language. We'll go back to the minutes to reflect that change.
Right.
That was on 2.2, I believe, yeah.
2.2, page 17, create a state-of-the-state schools district. You were going to just change the title or change what you were trying to capture with that report?
Yep.
Dr. Campbell?
So if I remember correctly, what, the comment was really centered around how do we distinguish between the state of the schools in terms of what the town is familiar with and the state of operations within the district? Is that correct?
Correct. In our conversation, we talked about doing an annual status.
Yes.
Strategic Plan Status Report, or something like that was what we had talked about.
Yes.
Rather than in quotes, state of the schools, which is traditionally how we refer to the presentation to town meeting.
Yeah, I think, so there was two things I think were added.
I think we're adding, my understanding is perhaps some clarification on what we meant by State of the Schools in this district, because it was not that town meeting presentation. It was more of a publication of, you know, a variety of opportunities and things that happened.
Right. In your answer, in your answer, you had said that you meant more of an update for a status of where the strategic plan was, and you were looking, thinking about it being annual. So I thought you were just going to change that bullet.
No, that was missing, that we felt that that piece was missing, that that component is missing. What we meant by this was more of highlighting, providing reports about the professional development of our teachers, educational status of our teachers, something that goes beyond that traditional town report. But the state of the, the status of the strategic plan was, was in fact, missing from this as an objective.
To the bottom line, just retitle it and redefine the purpose the way you want it.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any other feedback or anything? Now, the section, the comment from the school committee, now that this is completed, and I hope in a few minutes it passes, I'll write you a insert.
Please. I need a statement from the school committee chair identifying how we intend in the future to use the document.
Yep. All right. So if no further, you have a question?
No, I was going to make a motion.
Thank you. I was just going to ask for it.
Do you want me to include your changes?
Yes, with, discuss changes.
So I make a motion that the school committee accept and approve the 2016 to 2020 strategic plan with the suggested changes.
Second it, Mr. Morgan. Any further discussion? All those in favor unanimous?
If I may add just one last piece, we did put our draft of the plan on a page, and that will, it's a new design, and it will, once everything approved, and we'll put our social media information on there as well, and where people can find the full document, and that will go out shortly.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I told my wife when she was here before that there's no way it's going to go to 9:30. Notice she left earlier, so...
Wise woman.
Wise, yes. So without objection, then, I think we're done tonight, and we're adjourned.